I don't know.
Yeah, there's still one more in some. Kara takes care.
You're here, you don't have to be here.
Okay, everyone, we're ready to reconvene on on City Council, on the transform Baltimore. Bill 12 dash 0152. We're to the committee members, we're on page 13 of 27. We were on T 602, Councilwoman Clark. We're still on table 10, 301. We are now on the add, everyone got it in front of them? We are on, we are now on, it says, add new use category medical dispensary, Councilwoman Clark.
I'm sorry, I thought we were, I thought we had, I think I'm finished with with 602, and I thought that's where we ended. No, I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'll stand corrected, where am I? Oh, okay, yes, okay, so there is, but I'm, I, with, the others are moot, so. Add new, medical dispensary is withdrawn. In, within 602, the only viable issue was houses of worship. The other I indicated at the beginning were moot because they'd already been covered one way or the other.
Is the motion withdraw the other two?
Sure, move to withdraw the other two.
Okay, move by Councilwoman Clark for withdrawal, second by Councilman Craft. Others in favor of withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, withdrawn. We are now on, thank you, Councilwoman, we are now on T 732. That is table 10, 301, still planning.
Yes, the commission voted to add hospitals to the permitted use in C 5, which is the downtown zone. And so we would like the committee to add that to the list of permitted uses downtown.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Move by Councilwoman Middleton, do I have a second? Second by Councilman.
Question.
Craft.
What are they now, I'm sorry?
T 732.
Okay, maybe they missed that, they are permitted in C 5. So I apologize, that's a redundancy on the commission's part.
Move to withdraw.
So what is it?
I withdraw the motion, it's already moved.
There we go.
It already is permitted in C 5.
And the next one.
So this is withdrawn.
Okay, show you withdrawal. So now, we're T 736.
736, I think this committee already voted for prior, which is restaurants conditional in C 1 VC.
Move to withdraw.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry, others in favor of withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, T 76, T 736 withdrawn. T 737, planning.
Okay, hopefully this isn't redundant as well. Broadcasting, adding TV, radio and broadcasting, and I'm not sure where they are now. It's not on the table, but adding them to C 2. Is. Ah, okay. Broadcasting, TV or radio are currently listed as permitted in C 3, 4 and 5. And the commission voted to add as conditional to C 2. This would be on the tables, page 10, under broadcasting, it's B rather than.
Under what, broadcasting? Okay, I see.
And this came to, I do recall, this was a small radio station wanted to be able to be in a commercial area. And so, they requested that.
Be glad to move that motion. Move to C 2 for a CB.
Where is that?
Well, again, when the commission voted on this, there was only one type, so they were recommending CB. It's up to this committee.
To approve radio broadcast stations in C 2 with zoning board approval.
Do we have a second, second by Councilman Henry? Vice singer votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes, Branch? Branch is absent, Clark?
Yes.
Clark, yes, Henry?
Yes, I have a question when we're done.
Henry, yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes, Mosby is absent. Five, yes, with two absent. The motion's moved, Councilman.
I'm sorry, are these, I know that we're just dealing with the Cs right now, but do you happen to know off the top of your head if this kind of broadcasting is also allowed on the educational campus zones? Okay, I'll look ahead, don't worry about it. Okay, we'll deal with it when we get there.
It's actually not in tables on the educational, but yes.
That's on page 10.
It's like most of the radio stations that I actually go to are on more.
Okay, this is for planning, 738, planning.
Oh, okay, I was trying to.
Multifamily dwelling.
Let me get back to you, Councilman Henry.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay. This is a recommendation of the commission.
Under the commercial tables, the residential uses in the commercial tables, it's broken down into two parts. It is dwelling multifamily and dwellings above the ground floor. And the concept here was that to encourage that the, on the main streets, when you have housing upstairs, it's not necessarily residential downstairs, it's more of a storefront with the apartments above. And therefore, originally drafted that the multifamily, an exclusive multifamily building, as opposed to a multifamily building above the stores, was conditional. And the commission did not concur with that and wanted to treat them the same. So that the apartments were permitted on the ground floor, so that that conditional multifamily would go to permitted.
Move by Councilman Craft, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton, vice singer votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is what?
Did I, did I make that motion? Who made that motion, I'm sorry?
I did.
Craft and Middleton.
Oh, Craft, okay, sorry.
Vice singer, you good?
No, but I'll.
Yeah, vice singer votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch is absent, Clark?
No.
Clark is no, Henry?
So, I'm sorry, I need to actually ask a question, a clarification from planning before I vote.
Laurie?
The department was recommending that you have, you could have more than one apartment upstairs if you had commercial on the ground floor.
As permitted.
As permitted. And the commission wanted to be able to have an entire building of apartment, of multiple apartments. Yeah, I would have supported the department's recommendation, but I can't support, that seems inappropriate in C 1. Thought the whole point was to have ground floor retail.
Right, but after hearing testimony that some of the apartment buildings, you know, they don't always lend themselves to having the ground floor retail. And having that as an absolute restriction just seemed too much. And that there are still design standards such that you have to have lobbies and openings on the ground floor. You can't, you know, have somebody's bedroom right on Main Street. That they wanted to see that amended, that was the rationale.
No.
So we're comfortable with the commission's.
Okay, Councilman Henry is no, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby is, is absent. Passes with a three.
Did I vote?
Yes, with two, no.
Did I vote?
No.
You wrote it now.
Oh, Branch, I didn't see. I didn't see Branch.
Okay, I forgot, it's so long ago.
How about if I email you?
It's just a bad day. It just won't end.
This is 738, right?
That much I know. I'm not sure what it does.
Let's go back, vice singer votes yes, Craft votes yes, Branch votes yes, Middleton votes yes. And Clark and Henry vote no, and Mosby is absent. So now we have four yes, with two no and one absent. So T 738 passes.
So it's, so now, the.
Microphone?
May I ask?
Microphone.
So now, in C 1 and C 1 VC, the multifamilies are permitted uses even though they do not have any ground floor retail, they can be with.
It didn't say C 1 VC, C 1 and C 1E.
C 1E, so C 1 VC is excluded.
Right.
Thank you. I'm just clarifying what the amendment does. So C 1 VC is not included in this resolution, thank you.
Okay, we are now on T 742, which is planning.
The commission voted to add to C 5, age restricted housing dormitory. That would be downtown. And I believe that came from one of the universities. And a research and development facility would be a permitted use in downtown. Right, they're not on the tables, these were voted to be added to the downtown C 5 zone.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer that till we can talk to the Councilman.
Really?
Costello.
Okay.
Yeah, do I have a motion, okay, you move to defer, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Clark? All those, all those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, so T 742 was deferred. Now we are on T 846. This is page 10, 10, 301. Anyone wants, anyone, any committee members want to sponsor this?
Yes, Mr. Chair. These are proposed amendments. Remember, we were talking about some, I guess a few meetings ago, on the definition of electric substation. And there's three types of electric substations, indoor, enclosed and outdoor. And these are further proposed codes. So I make a motion to move this.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton, Councilwoman Clark, second, right? Councilwoman Clark, vice singer votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch? Branch is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, and Mosby is absent. So T 846 moves six with one absent. That's that, okay, it's T 8. Now we are on T 898, this is Councilwoman Clark, page 10, we're still on 10, 301.
Oh, 698 is moot, we've already killed this twice.
Okay. We gotta withdraw that.
You don't want to go for three, I mean.
No.
Moved by Councilwoman, yeah, withdrawn from Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Craft, right? All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it. And T 898 is withdrawn. We're now on, okay, did we do this one? This is T 899, Councilman Mosby?
Can we do something with bail bonds?
I think we do.
We already did stuff with this.
We did.
We voted on those two.
We voted.
We've already voted on those two items on the commercial table.
So it's.
Actually, we voted on T 46.
But we did.
We voted to leave blank bail bond establishments in the C 1 and C 1 VC. But we didn't vote to anything else.
Oh, really, we didn't?
No, that's T 46.
So we did.
So we didn't deal with the rest of it. Councilman Mosby. Councilman Mosby's amendment deals with changing from C, what's no, we've already voted to, to C conditional ordinance, and then to make a conditional ordinance in all of the remaining zones. So bail bonds, essentially what he's doing is moving to have a conditional by ordinance in every zone. And we had already made a decision in 46 to take it out completely in a C 1 and C 1 VC. So if there's a motion, it would be to move C 1E, C 2, C 3, C 4, C 5, from what they're presently listed, which is commercial and then all permitted, to commercial ordinance for all.
For what category?
Bail bond. No, I just.
Oh gee, this is where, okay. Bail bonds.
Are you okay with that, don't worry?
T 46, I think you're right about that, is that where it is? I should have what it, what happened to it. What page of these pages?
You move.
I would move.
11?
I would move to change the classification in.
Bail bonds?
For bail bond establishment in C 1E, C 2, C 3, C 4, C 5, from those presently listed to conditional ordinance.
Okay, so you moved. Moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Clark, right?
That's excluding C 1, C 1 VC that's off the table entirely.
Correct, which is off the table.
So we're going from C 2 out to C 5.
Right.
Okay. Vice singer votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry? Henry is yes, Middleton? Yes, Mosby is absent, we have six yes. And one absent, and motion passed. Now he's got the other one, Dorni, is that the check cashing? So we, we did that, didn't we?
We did bail bonds too, so maybe you want to go back.
Well, we only did bail bonds with C 1. Check, check cashing establishments is in T 601.
It's not me, I did it once.
And we voted against that change for the three, the recommendation there was to take it out completely, right? The motion was to take it out completely. Previously.
No, the motion was to make it conditional by ordinance. Friendly amendments were accepted.
Oh, there was amendment. Okay.
Conditional by ordinance in 1 through 3, and then Councilman Mosby expanded it to conditional by ordinance in all Cs. And then after, and then after a host of friendly amendments, it was, it was defeated in a most unfriendly fashion.
Okay, so that's already been defeated.
So now we are on. No motion on that. So now we are on, for the committee, we are on page 14. It's T 900, page 10, it's still table 10, 301, Councilman Henry? What is this, this has been.
Yeah, okay, so.
Where's this at?
What I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is how much of this has already been done, and it looks like most of it has been. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to withdraw the health center portion.
The what?
The health center portion.
Okay, you want to withdraw all that piece?
Actually, I, I think, and I agree, and we can withdraw the mental dental clinic piece. And it looks like we've done, and we did the retail goods, I, I'm happy to withdraw this amendment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Craft. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, T 900 is withdrawn. The next one is T, let's say page, T 718, planning.
You skipped 60. That's been withdrawn.
See, we threw that. This was to defer to tables for language?
Right, this is to make it clear that in the neighborhood commercial, the BMZA, neighborhood commercial by definition always goes to the zoning board. And to make it clear, it would probably be an asterisk on the table that says, the BMZA may waive the lot area requirements. Yes. T 718, I think it would probably go.
That says 10401.
Right, it probably best goes on 10401 in the lot area section.
Okay, so. So we're on 10401 now. Okay, that was my mistake.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Just to be clear, this is not a percentage variance, this is a wave that we're saying that the BMZA can simply.
A wave, it doesn't say they, they will.
But they can waive the minimum and maximum requirements entirely.
There is no real minimum, minimum lot area is only for the residential.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So, so retail goods.
Maximum.
Is 20,000 in C 1. Oh, okay, I've seen it, I gotcha, I gotcha. Okay, thank you.
It's not listed in the table, I, to be honest, I'm not sure exactly where this best fits in. It could be an asterisk on the tables in table 9. It landed here, but it could be, it might be clearer to put it in table 9, not, because that's where neighborhood commercial is.
9401.
Yeah, it really, it's listed as 10401, it's probably best in 9401.
9401?
Which would be where, blah blah blah, it would be the non-residential use in the maximum lot area.
I got you.
Minimum lot area, yes, I think that's the correct place, with sort of an asterisk that says, next to non-residential. I think is the clearest.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move that.
You move it?
So table 9401.
So what's going on with table 9, I got it.
Yeah, it goes back to table 9401 with an asterisk to say the board may waive.
Okay, Councilman Henry moves, do we have a second? Second by Councilman Craft. Vice singer votes yes, Craft? Craft votes yes, Branch? Branch votes yes, Clark? Say yes. Clark is yes, Henry?
I could just take a quick moment to explain, just, just to make sure we're all on the same page here. What we're, what we're saying is that under the existing tables in 9401, in R 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 and 10, there's a minimum lot area of 3,000 square feet that would be required for a non-residential use. And since most individual properties would be smaller than that, if you wanted to have a neighborhood commercial use, you have to be able to waive that minimum
Right.
requirement and fit it on a smaller lot.
Yeah.
And so, it, that, that's why I'm voting yes.
You vote?
Yeah, but she, she's going to want to go back and change her vote now.
Okay, we're going to go back, Councilwoman Clark votes no. Councilman Henry?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Middleton is yes, Councilman Mosby is absent. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 yes. One no and one absent, and T 718 passes, it's moved. We are now on.
T 607?
T 607?
Yes, Mr. Chair. What about this, I got to get them to turn to those pages in the.
Council?
Yes, you have the, the book, the booklet in front of you, turn to table 23. In.
Table what?
In my book, this notebook. The thin notebook that you were given, turn to table 23. And bear with us, these are amendments, amendment requests from the Roland Park Civic League.
I'll just say this part. These, if you will turn, and, and Councilwoman Middleton is the lead on this, and then we'll explain it, but if you will turn to page 15 of page 27. The T numbers that relate to what we are saying is T 609, T 891.
What are you reading from?
From page 15 of 27, there.
In your chart, but in the booklet, it's table 23. Yeah, the markup charts.
I got that, but what, Councilwoman Middleton, what do you, I mean, what I got to.
So instead of T 607, you don't want.
You're saying T 607. I need one person at a time to explain to me what we're doing here, you got, you're saying T 607, Council.
Instead of T 607, you want to pay attention to the following page, 15. Which is T 609, T 891 and T 895.
Yeah. Go ahead, see what she's, so we get clarity.
Now to see, may I say a word, well.
Yes.
In order to see in some kind of cogent order what this amendment is, if you go to that we handed out when we started all this, and you go to the one that says 23 table at the top. I'm sorry. If you will go to the spiral notebooks that we gave out, and you will go to the, at the top of the page, it says 23 table MPC. top of the page, it says 23 table MPC. That's what your amendments say, that the councilwoman has numbered for you.
Okay.
This is what it says, and she will go through them and explain them.
Okay, so, if I understand correctly, for the committee, 609, T-609, T-891, and T-895, right, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes, and I'd. And there's one more on Page 16, T-896. Yes.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a, a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, hold on, hold on, we gotta, uh, you already have your script, we gotta catch up.
My, my question is this, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
All these amendments, they just apply to the one, the one VC, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, it's moved by Council, this is, Councilman Henry?
Since I have an eeny weeny tiny bit of VC in my district, I need a slightly better understanding of what this is doing, um, before I just vote yes. I, can, can, can we, can we get a little bit of explanation of these amendments? Are, are we, are we doing them one at a time?
No, she, she, we're doing them all together, right?
I'm gonna do them all together.
Okay.
Um, we'll take turns. Basically, what this does is it, um, it has nothing to do with uses, as you see, it's Balkan yard, and the underlined, the, on Page 23 table MPC, the underlined language has been added, originally, the Balkan yard for C1 VC is exactly the one for C1. So, if you see something underlined, it is something that has been changed from C1 to C1 VC, and in every case, um, in terms of, um, like, minimum lot areas, maximum lot areas, um, you have smaller areas, smaller build-outs, and you have a maximum height, uh, down under maximum building height, um, you have 40 feet as opposed to, um, what is listed. And so you can't go higher than 40 feet in C1 VC with a building, uh, and as far as minimum building heights, there is no minimum, you can build it like, as big as your toe. Um, and then, added things like, no off-street parking is allowed in front of a C1, uh, 1VC. You can't have parking pulling into your private property. Uh, and then, uh, there's a footnote at the bottom of that second page, uh, in the notebook, and it says, "In the C1 VC zoning district, any change to existing building setbacks or yards must be approved as variances by the Baltimore City Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals." So, they have enlarged the setbacks, and they have required, uh, zoning action for changes to what would be adopted here as amendments.
So, if I could also ask, is there anybody else on the committee who has any VC in their, um, in their district who has a concern about this? Okay, who had, so, there's nobody on the committee who has any VC in their district who thinks that this is a bad idea and can articulate why? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so, Vice Speaker votes yes, we're clear. Councilman Craft? Councilman Craft, yes. Councilwoman Branch? Councilwoman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes!
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yeah.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes, yes.
Double yes, Mosby is absent.
No, the second yes was for Mosby.
We have yes, we have six yes with one absent. 609. 609, 891, 895, and 896, moves. So everybody good with that?
Yes!
Okay. Now, now I have to go back, I was just informed that we bypassed, what, 6, T-607?
Didn't you say we don't?
That was 609.
Should we withdraw that?
We're done, it was 607.
Uh, I think we, we will withdraw that.
You're withdrawing what?
60, T-607.
Second.
Okay, so, T-607, withdrawal moved by Councilwoman Middleton, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who are favored to withdraw, T-607, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T-607 is withdrawn. Now we have T-608, that's Winhurst Improvement Association, this is Table, uh, is there a motion on, anybody sponsoring that?
Wait, wait.
Do I have a motion?
Wait a minute.
Um, that's right under, that's 6, T-608, the Winhurst Improvement Association, amend to, uh, the yard perimeters of the current B11 district, including the floor area ratio requirement?
That's over my head. Where is it? What, where is it? What page of this?
Page 14, the last one.
Huh? It's Page 15, right? Is it Page 15?
Uh, to the, uh, the, no, no, no. Is, is he in our, is he in C1 VC? Up there in Winhurst?
Okay, so, does someone, do the committee members?
Withdraw, withdraw.
We're gonna withdraw this one as well.
Okay, Councilwoman Middleton withdraws, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, all those who are favored to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
I saw that before, no, no.
And T-608 is withdrawn.
They put everything he wrote in this thing, and that, you know what I mean? He was there, was okay with the C1 VC.
893, that's his, 892, and 89, that's Roland Park 2.
Okay, on Page 16. Uh, Councilman Craft? You have amendment?
Withdrawn, where is it? Um, what do they want?
In the amendments I submitted for, amendment to, um, 10401, the minimum lot area in C1 and C1E, to reduce the minimum lot area from 550 square feet per dwelling unit to 325 square feet per dwelling unit.
We're on T's, which one are we on? Is it T-745?
On my amendment number two, in the packet.
It's not on the sheets.
It's in the packet.
Oh, all right.
Oh, okay.
10301?
Right, it's page, and it's Page 13.
Yeah, 10401?
Right, 10401, Page 13. Minimum lot area. Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, to my colleague, uh, I, this is first I've heard of this, actually, I didn't know that we were going to be doing, uh, I didn't know we were going to be doing things that we've never talked about before, um, but since we are, um, what is the current square footage for C1? And, um, this does not affect C1 VC because we just adopted yardable.
No, I didn't, I didn't say C1 VC.
No, I know you didn't, I'm being clear. And what is the square foot DU for Thor, C1 right now? Because this is, this is the smallest one I've seen, except for what they, what people think IMU should be, which I think is ridiculous.
Well, I've talked about density over and over and over again, and I've talked about, you know, increasing density, and that's exactly what this does. It is, it allows us to increase density, and, um.
It's, um, where are we? Ah, here. What, what is it? May I ask, I'm sorry, what, may I ask what it is now? C1?
It's 550 square feet in five, in C1 and C1E, and this would reduce it to 325 square feet, in C1 and C1E.
Is there anything in this, is there anything in our code besides the total elimination of square feet requirements downtown that is as low as this, besides the proposed IMU dwelling unit?
Office residential.
Office residential.
Some of the office residential.
What is 300 square feet like? It feels like you have to stand up straight all the time, can you lie down and go to bed?
No, it's 30, 30 feet, 32 feet by 10 feet, 32 and a half feet by 10.
10 by 30, oh my gosh.
This isn't the square feet of the unit, it's the square feet of lot required to build a unit.
Yeah.
This is more for multi-story, this is for multi-story buildings, this isn't.
Yeah, this isn't, yeah.
Tall and skinny.
Right, it has nothing to do with the size of the unit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, it didn't, yeah, this is really multi.
You have to have that much square footage on your lot to accommodate each unit, but it tells you how many units you can have, so there is a relationship.
Councilman Henry?
I just want to check my math. So, if a lot is 50 by 60, that's gonna be 3,000 square feet, you could put 10 units in a building that fits on that lot, but there's no, there's no, there doesn't say whether or not that's, you know, two units on five floors because it's gonna go straight up, or it could be, you know, five units on two floors.
It's a C1 or C1E, so in the C1 or C1E, the maximum height the building could be was 60 feet, it couldn't be any higher than 60 feet. So if you couldn't get the units on that footprint, you, you could only get as much, as many as 60 feet will accommodate.
Five stories.
Yeah.
Right, so that's, yeah, that's what, so I'm saying, is you could do a five-story tower, I mean, or call it a tower, I mean, it's five.
It's really, yeah.
But five, yeah, five, wait, you could do a five-story, you know, medium-sized apartment building that had two 1,200 square foot units on each floor for five floors, so it's not that each unit is really tiny, it's just that the footprint may not accommodate a, you know, a huge, it, the, the footprint may, may, may require it to be taller than it might otherwise.
Right.
But the units themselves wouldn't necessarily be as small as this.
Right.
Right, okay, I got you.
Height's 60 feet on mixed use, it's 40 feet, I know the height in C1s. It's 40 feet, it's 40 feet for commercial and 60 feet for mixed use.
I, I, I couldn't tell if the, if the councilman was laughing because he heard my aside to Ms. Kunst, that I would be even more okay with this if the first floor had to be commercial.
Yes, I move that amendment.
Do I have a second? Councilman Henry, Vice Speaker votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark?
Abstain.
Clark?
Abstain.
Henry? Yes, Middleton?
Y- yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby is absent, so we have five yes, one absent, and one abstained. So that amendment passes, you have one more amendment?
Yes, my second amendment is on the same page, and it applies to, uh, C2, C3, and C4, and it reduces these in, uh, from 300 square feet to 225 square feet, and these are, as you get down into bigger buildings, bigger lots, C2s, C3s, and C4s, um, and you can build higher buildings, particularly in the C3s and C4s, and they're still almost twice the size of the residential care facilities for the elderly. I move my second amendment.
That's your Councilman Henry?
But if, aren't the height limits the same for C1 and C2?
C2 is 100 feet by conditional use.
Oh.
60 feet by, um, matter of right, and 100 feet by conditional use.
But that has nothing to do with this amendment, correct?
No.
May help for Councilman Henry, um, you recall when we did some of those studies a couple years ago of the York Road properties around the, um, the Senator, and how, you know, you might want to do buildings that have apartments above, and people were comfortable with those types of units being on.
Sure.
York Road.
But people were comfortable with the height limit of, you know, five stories or 60 feet.
Well, we did talk about more, because I remember we did some of those drawings that were in the 80 and 90 feet high, but the idea being that on those commercial corridors, that is the place where you'd have more density of units to get some of that maybe rental housing out of neighborhoods and be able to provide that on the main corridors.
That height limit conditional by board or by ordinance?
It's, um, right now, it's by board.
Interested in a little swap?
I'm sorry?
If, if, if that height limit were by ordinance, I would feel much more comfortable with a smaller.
Well, it's on these charts.
Let's, okay, can we, can we, can we, can we do that too, then? Make that, where, where?
Make it a separate thing.
Sure. Can we do that one first?
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, so anyway, I move, I make my motion with regard to the first one.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Vice Speaker votes, Vice Speaker seconds. For the vote, Vice Speaker, yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft, yes, Branch? Branch, yes, Clark? Clark is no, Henry?
Pass.
Henry abstains, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes?
Yes.
Mosby is absent, so we have four yes, one no, one absent, and one abstained, motion is moved.
Okay, now, what, um, right, so what Councilman Henry was suggesting was that, it, if you look at maximum building heights in a C2 and a C3.
Is this on the sheet?
Are you, we're on Page 13.
In the tables.
We're on, in the tables, we're looking at maximum building heights, and we're looking at C2 and C3. Right now, it's 60 feet, and you can use multifamily or mixed use with dwellings above the ground floor allowed at 100 feet by conditional use. So you have a base at 60 feet, you can go to conditional use. Councilman Henry would like to make that conditional use by ordinance.
Second that motion.
Yeah. Okay, it's moved by Councilman Henry, right? Second by Councilwoman Clark. On that motion, Vice Speaker votes yes, Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes, Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes, Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes, Henry?
Yeah.
Henry's yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes, Mosby is absent, so we have six yes with one absent, motion passes. That takes care of your three amendments, right?
That's it, thank you.
Now I gotta find it where we're at.
Now we're back on track with this.
We're fine, I don't know what, they've got.
One Page 16.
Did we do 745?
That's, um.
No, see.
Is that ours? 735 is ours.
745?
735 is Planning.
On 1045, it says here, page.
745.
745, we're starting.
That is 10501, is that right?
I'm not sure where you are. Are you, T-7?
Mix-up here.
I'm seeing.
745.
It says 735 right here.
896, 745.
896, but you skipped.
Page 16.
Okay, you skipped T-735 on Page 15.
What page is that?
On Page 15, T-735.
On page 15, T735, which is an agency amendment. It's really just a technical, but you did skip it.
Oh, we don't, I don't either. Oh, yes, way at the top of the page. Page 15. What is it?
It's really just a cross-reference that's incorrect.
It's a technical.
Yeah, just for the record, Kara, the cross-reference should be table 10503K. I believe it's K. It's the next table, yeah.
So we're on, okay, we're on T735, right?
So we, if, if you consider that technical, if you're comfortable with that, then we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know what it says, you can read it. But I don't know what it means. It means they, it's technical.
I'm sorry, so now you're on 745.
Wrong reference number. Yeah, it's technical.
We would withdraw 745. It was superseded by Councilwoman Clark and Middleton's amendments.
So T745 you're withdrawing?
Yes.
Oh, she's withdrawing.
Do I have a motion to withdraw? Councilman Craft, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those who favor the withdrawal of T745, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. And T745 is withdrawn. Okay, what about the T?
7.
Planning, T743?
That's technical, that's done.
Okay, so that's technical?
Right, and now we're into Title 11.
We're now on 10, what?
Which one did we skip? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, whatever that is.
We skipped. They're all withdrawn.
They were all withdrawn.
So they're all withdrawn, so we can. What page is that?
So our next one is.
Educational Campus is in 12. Are you all doing the same thing or different things? What are you doing?
Okay, so planning, we are now on, for the committee, we are now on T749. Well, T749, this is planning.
Yes, T749 is, is somewhat of a clarification and, and that is the way we show office use. Well, let me step back a minute. It's very important for the industrial community that offices not be permitted use in the heavy industry because it takes away from their strength for that land. So the amendment is to remove from I1, I2, and MI the P under the office category. It does have the asterisk there that it should be secondary to the principal industrial use. But in further review, it really is not even necessary to mention it there. If the industrial use has their own office space, that just goes with the industrial use.
Is there an action buried in that?
Delete the P from I1, I2, and MI. These are the, table 11301, under office.
Under what?
Office.
Page 18. Under office.
Second.
In what? Hold on one second.
Where is it?
Okay, in I1, I2, and MI, right?
Correct.
Where am I?
Leave them, leave it blank, right?
Mm-hmm.
They get the blank.
Put notes for what?
Yeah.
401?
I'll move that.
Oh, and I'm, actually, wait a second, let me just check one, yeah, but all three, mm-hmm.
Okay, Henry moves, do I have a second?
Middleton, second.
Question, where are we in the, where are we in the tables?
We're on page 18.
Page 18 out of 20, uh, page 18, oh.
No, 16 out of 22.
Page 18.
Oh, yeah, in the table, okay.
Tables.
Oh, in the tables.
Page 18, in the tables. On this sheet, we're on page 16 of 27, T749.
Okay.
The, in the tables, we're on page 18, office. And the amendment would make office blank in I1, I2, and MI. It would be blank. You couldn't have offices in the.
The intention is clarified with the footnote, but it's better just to leave it with that.
Well, Henry moved it, Craft seconded. Vice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby is absent. We have six yes, one absent, and T749 passes. We are now on T747, planning.
That is actually the same as 748, and that is an amendment to add vocational schools to permitted, would like technical, commercial schools permitted in OIC.
New category?
Uh, no, it's not a new category. It is.
Educational facility, commercial.
Educational facilities, commercial, vocational. And it was recommended that that be permitted as opposed to conditional in the office industrial campus. That's sort of the office park zone.
So is that commercial vocational, is that what you're saying?
Yes, technical school, technical, commercial schools.
In the OIC.
Make them permitted in the office parks.
Permitted in the OIC.
OIC, which is your office park category.
So we have a, which category is it? Is it, there are three categories.
It's under institutional.
Institutional use, on page 17.
Right, and there's education, post-secondary, educational, primary.
She just said, "commercial."
Commercial vocational.
That's the one.
So it's there.
Right.
So you.
Change the C to a P in OIC.
Make, let it be permitted, you know, OIC. Everything else remains the same.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No, moved.
Moved by Councilman Craft, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Henry. Vice singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry? Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby is absent, so we have six yes with one absent. And 747 and 748 passes, is moved. That's what 16, now we're going to page, page 17 of 27. What's that, T296?
It's a phase out, we did it in text.
Yes.
This is SBBA.
Not sure what it does.
Huh?
I'm not sure what it does, but.
Well, committee member wants to sponsor this, which, it's for SBBA, T296, amend to permit the maximum number of industrial uses and prohibit non-industrial uses to an extent practicable in I1, I2, and M1 zones.
I'd like to make the motion.
What does it mean?
It means, when in doubt, go, it, it means, this is all about preserving the industrial areas of the city as such. And this means, as guidance, when in doubt, go, go industrial. Vote for industrial, not for bells and whistles. So if there's a, if it's a close call, call it for the industrial sector.
So, just as a, as a question, would, if, if we did that, would we have to go through all of these uses, every single one of them, and determine whether they are non-industrial uses?
No.
And if so, and if so, well, that's what, that's what the amendment says.
Well, no, you, there's another way of looking at it, if I may. The other way.
Well, let me finish.
Oh, sure.
The, if, it says amend to permit the maximum number of industrial uses and prohibit non-industrial uses to the extent practicable in I1, I2, and MI zones. When you go over to page 18, there are a good number of permitted and, and conditional uses that are allowed, particularly in the I1. And I think it would be a question as to whether some of those were industrial or not. And I, you know, I think we would have to look at them.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I suspect that what has happened here, thinking back to how the hearings have gone, is this is a case of staff capturing sentiment of testimony, not necessarily a request for a specific amendment. And I'm, and I'm going specifically by the fact that it says, "to the extent practicable." And to, to, in, in the larger, in the larger meaning of that, the table that we have is that. We have, we have limited the, you know, we have maximized the industrial uses and prohibited the non-industrial uses to the extent practicable. Like, right, we just eliminated office use, for example, you know, that, because it wasn't required that it be there. But I don't think that this amendment was intended for us to sit here and go through the ayes line by line and make a different judgment call than we've already made on each one of these uses. So I, I would suggest, has, has this amendment been moved and seconded?
No.
Yeah, I would suggest that we, we accept that we stand with our SBBA partners in wanting to maximize the industrial uses of the industrial area.
What, what Kara is suggesting, and she's talking with Councilwoman Clark right now, is that we defer this. We have the actual letter from SBBA, and it has some specific things in it.
Oh, okay, well, if they have specifics, then sure.
I would move to defer.
Okay, so Councilman Craft moves to defer, do I have a second? Defer to.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who favor the defer, T296, till we read the letter and the information, say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say nay. The ayes have it. T296 is deferred. We're now on T, Councilwoman Clark, we are now on T611. This is, uh.
This is a list.
Table 11301.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, 611 contains a number of proposed zoning changes to the industrial table, mainly, almost exclusively to IMU, but also to I1 and every once in a while to I2. And in the spirit of what SBBA just is saying about, let us breathe as industries, we have a new, if I can just make this little statement. IMU, the planning department would confirm, is, in their view, a way to do what PUDs do by right. No.
It's a buffer.
Well, without going through a PUD process. In other words, it's a mixed use that has a lot of residential and does not dictate how that is distributed across an area of ownership and which is by right, based on zoning and dimensions. I mean, basically, it's, it's what is replacing some of the functions of PUDs. With that in mind, you also have a very heavy residential component that is in that prospect with teeny-weeny, even like the 300-square-foot lot per unit, which is very, very small scale. Therefore, I do have some recommendations that come from the community, some that don't come from the community, about IMUs and how they really are going to be together with these mixed uses, and some of them are not appropriate. So, or should have more safeguards around them. So, all right, enough of that.
Do you have a motion on that?
I do. I'd like to move, in the residential area, that a dwelling, multifamily in IMU not be permitted, but be conditional by ordinance.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark moves.
So this is the residential area?
Dwelling, no.
Family.
Be conditional by ordinance?
Okay, so you're going from IMU from permitted to conditional by council, right?
Right, so that people be.
I just, I just want to get clarity.
So people have some input.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark moves, second by Councilman Henry, right? Is that right?
Yep.
Councilman Henry. Vice singer votes no. Craft?
No.
Craft is no. Branch? Branch is no. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Is yes. Middleton?
No.
Middleton is no, and Mosby is absent. We have two yes with four nos and one absent. Motion fails. What's next is, Councilwoman, is what, institutional use?
Residential care facility, 17.
Residential. Okay, okay, residential.
Yeah, that's what's next. I'd like to move that in an IMU district, residential care facility, 17, or larger residence is not conditional by ordinance, but is left blank. Basically, I don't know where you're going to put them in, in people, 17 people in a mixed-use development that is not defined by PUD guidelines of where things go. They can go wherever they want.
I, I mean, I first need a clarification. So we're in a situation in IMU where you can have multifamily dwellings and you can have residential care facilities with less than 17 people, but you just want to prohibit something larger than 17.
Yeah, it's bigger. It takes more space. It has more people impacting on whatever it's in the mixed use with.
And so I want to be clear from Laurie, there, so anything where there's more than 17 people is prohibited in this district? I just want to be clear.
No, as drafted, we have it conditional to the board. And I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable with all of this because I know your colleague, Mr. Naden, helped us work on that, and I don't remember the specifics.
Right, I mean, honestly, without, without checking with the person who did our litigation, I can't say for sure if it would be legal or not. It seemed, it seems like outright prohibiting them might be okay if every other living situation over 17 was also prohibited. But it doesn't look like that's the case in this area. So, I, I mean, I couldn't say without checking with him.
Well, why not, maybe we should have, we should have Ms. Ruley check and come back to us and things like that.
So you want to defer that till we get?
Yeah, I'm happy to defer it. Let me just say this. The difference between putting a mixed-use development together with a PUD and doing it this way is that it's by right. These uses are by right. And it's, the mix and match is by right. Now, you say, "Well, they got to go to the planning commission, they got to go to the..." No. They have the right to the uses however they get mixed. People can advise and say, "Oh, my gosh." But this is what a mixed use of the future is in this code. Therefore, every process that can be put into place that gives somebody besides a developer input is certainly important, especially because it's so residential because it lets them have such time, have jammed-in units. It's going to be jammed residential, if people wish, with other mixed uses. So help people protect themselves. They won't have a process like a PUD.
Council inspector.
Use the microphone. Can't hear you.
Do I understand that the way transformed now, if it's beyond 17, 17 or more, it goes before the board?
As written, yes.
As, it does have a process?
For these residential care. And it was based on, I believe, my recollection and Ms. Ruley's is correct, that in all cases that permit multifamily, we allowed the larger care facilities by conditional use.
And so that there is a conformity there?
And I think in general, I, I hope that the committee understands industrial mixed use. It's a little unfortunate to compare it to the PUD. It really is intended as a creative base land use tool. And if there's concerns about the density of residential, I think that would be in 11403, and that would be the place to address it.
Okay, so...
If there's a need to limit residential.
Councilwoman, you make a motion or...
I move to defer in 6... No, that's what we decided to do. She's going to go look it up. T-611, move to defer for a legal review. The residential care facility is 17 or larger. I would like to point out that I was trying at the same time to deal with the multifamily, as with the 17 and more. And it really leaves these, well, on with the show.
So you move to defer?
Yeah, I move to defer.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those who favor to defer, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and that's deferred.
Okay.
The next one is institutional use.
All right, this is, this is industrial mixed use. I have one neighborhood that is just about nothing but that at the moment, and we've never had it before. A residential neighborhood with lots of row houses. Government facility, public works. In the IMU, it is permitted. I would ask that it be left blank.
There, Councilman, okay. I got it. Councilman Craft?
Hey, Kristen, can, Kristen, can you tell us DPW on this one?
So I've been trying to see the areas that are industrial mixed use. This could be problematic for Public Works and for other agencies. It does refer to pretty much many facilities. They're owned by government agencies, and it includes many things. So this could potentially be problematic if they were not to be permitted at all because we're talking about, you know, potentially things that would be necessary to core functions, correct?
Well, they could set up their cones. Is that what, I mean, what, what you mean?
Well, these are facilities, so this could be storage yards. This could be accessory uses to a pumping station. This could be many things.
Oh, it's offices. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Okay, everybody, go ahead.
You make, you make it a, yeah, Councilman Henry, then.
Do you be open to a friendly amendment to make a conditional by ordinance instead of not permitted at all?
It would have helped me over in Darley Park and South Clifton Park. Yes, I would like that.
Okay.
So...
I would second the motion if, to make government facilities and public works in IMU conditional by ordinance.
She wants to make it blank, so you...
I'll accept.
You accept, okay, so... So a friendly amendment for conditional by ordinance. That is moved by, is that coming from Councilwoman Clark? Second by Councilman Henry. Rice Singer votes no. Craft?
No.
Craft is no. Clark, Branch?
No.
Branch is no. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
I'm going to explain my vote, and I'm sick and I'm tired, and it's the end of the week. And I'm going to just point out that periodically we in this room complain about the fact that we don't have a lot of the control over agencies that our constituents think we have. And even though we may have wonderful individual working relationships with individual people in the bureaucracy, the reality is that because of the way that the system is set up, there's very little that we're, that they require us for in the pursuit of their daily efforts and objectives. And this is an example of an opportunity that we're walking away from, where if Public Works did need to have some type of facility in an IMU in somebody's district, all they would have to do is come to the councilperson and explain what it is that they were trying to do. And if there was going to be unhappiness with the surrounding community, give the councilperson and the community and the agency an opportunity to sit down at a table and talk about it. And that's what conditional by ordinance allows, and that's why I'm voting for this amendment. Because not voting for this amendment basically means you're saying that you don't want to have the opportunity to have the agencies of any agency of city government come and talk to you and to your communities before locating facilities there.
It just means in this instance, it doesn't mean...
In this instance, right, in an industrial IMU. I'm not, I'm sorry if I was taking this as a greater generalization, but in this instance, right before us, for industrial IMU, which, and I'll be honest, I don't even have any in my district.
I have a lot.
Okay, if you have, if you have a lot of it in your district, then I would, you know, then I would just say that this is an opportunity to require the administration to negotiate.
Councilman, that's the consideration of the councilman that's representing that district.
I get that, and this is my opportunity to share with the council people making this...
Your vote, what's your vote?
My, my vote is yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
No.
Councilwoman Middleton is no. Mosby?
No.
Mosby is no. We are joined by Councilman Mosby. We have two yes, and we have five nos. Motion fails.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I know I can't vote, but in the greater picture, when we have neighborhoods that are mixed use, whether it is IMU or not, it is, in the collaboration of city services, businesses, residential, inures to the benefit of the community for the residents. So I really appreciate this vote.
Councilwoman Clark, we are now on homeless shelter in IMU.
Oh.
You want to leave it blank?
I presume that law, lost, and that they can, there are permitted use in IMUs?
No.
Homeless shelter? I would move that in IMU, it's blank. Leave it blank. In other words, not conditional and not permitted.
Okay, so it's moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, you second? Council, moved by Council, second by Councilman Craft. Rice Singer votes no. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Is no. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Pass.
Yes?
Pass.
Pass? Henry, pass. Middleton?
No.
Middleton is no. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. We have three yes, three no.
I vote yes.
So is Henry?
Pass.
Well, that's what pass means.
You abst...
Abstain.
You abstain, you...
I'm sorry. Point of, point of, point of, point of order.
The vote was to finalize. You can come back, so what do you...
But, but actually, this is a point of, point of inquiry. I had been taught that passing meant that the vote continues past you. To abstain is a separate vote. And so passing means I want to see how the rest of the vote goes, and then it comes back to you. But, you know, that, that being said, now that, now that, now that I have had a chance to, you know, see where this is going to rain out, then I'm actually going to vote no on this amendment.
So you're going to vote no on this amendment? Huh?
And, and, and if I need to explain my vote, I would say that at this point, I think it would be a really bad signal to say that we're going to not permit homeless shelters at all. If we had some measure of conditionality on it where there was going to be the opportunity to do it, I would be more comfortable, uncomfortable with prohibiting homeless shelters.
Mr. Chair, if I could speak?
Okay, okay, we're going to go back because, yeah, Councilman Craft?
Just pointing to Councilman.
Oh, okay.
Just for the record, I don't think we voted to restrict homeless shelters. I thought the vote was to ensure that there was a conditional ordinance around homeless shelters.
If I could, if I could respond, I would say that the vote was to, instead of having them be conditional by board in IMUs, to leave that square blank by which they would not be permitted at all. And if, if, if you, if we, if the, if the councilman was willing to revisit this vote as a conditional by ordinance, I would be happy to support an amendment that made homeless shelters conditional by ordinance. But I don't think that I can flatly prohibit them.
Mr. Chair, if there's a way for us to revisit the vote, I would prefer to revisit the vote to set it up as conditional by ordinance. It's very limited opportunity in our city where it's easy to set up a homeless shelter. We know that this is a critical issue that's not plaguing our city now, but will be there for years and decades to come. I think that we can't pigeonhole ourselves to restrict that, but we should allow it to go through conditional ordinance.
It came out, there was no, there was no majority, it was tied.
Mr. Chair, I, as I understand it, it's not a motion to reconsider the previous vote. It's a motion for a, a new thing, which is to have them there conditional by ordinance, I think is what he said. And there was a second, so I think that's the open motion.
So that's, that's good.
Yeah, you're just, it's a different concept.
This motion and second, okay.
You're not voting to reconsider based on the, the previous motion, which...
Okay, so...
Wouldn't work.
So... So is this, this is a, this is a reconsideration, this is a new vote?
No, it's not a reconsideration because that would have to be done by somebody who voted in the non-pervailing side. So I would do a brand-new motion for the conditional, which was seconded, so now it's...
Okay, so Councilman Mosby moves, moves, who's second? Seconded by Councilwoman Clark, and that's by conditional ordinance instead of leaving it blank. Okay, well, Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes, so we have seven yes. Motion is moved for the homeless piece. Now we're on the hospital. Councilwoman Clark?
Hospital, um, you know, this is hospital in...
IMU?
Yeah, it's from conditional by zoning board to conditional by ordinance for IMU.
Okay.
conditional by ordinance for a hospital in IMU.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark. Seconded by Councilman Henry. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch?
Yes.
Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby is yes. Seven yes. Moved. This is all Councilwoman Clark's commercial use now.
I'm going to leave body art alone and go to banquet halls. So, uh, move to withdraw body art.
So what, so body art you're removing?
Yeah, I'm, I'm like done with the body art.
So all those who favor to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
I'm not going to make a recommendation.
That's removed. Okay, we're going to banquet hall.
Uh, that, well, I do want to, and that's why I'm removing this so that I can get a free whatever.
We're reacting to banquet hall.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to, in IMU, for a banquet hall. See, here's my problem with IMU. I don't care if it's a whole building is the banquet hall. It's the mixed use. I don't know what else it's going to go in with. So banquet hall in an IMU is suggested as permitted, but I would like it to be left blank in IMU so that you can't have one where you might have residents across the hall or down the, across the alley or something because it's mixed.
Okay, so, second.
Thank you.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman Craft. Rice Singer is yes. Craft?
Yes.
Craft is yes. Branch? Branch is yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes. So we have seven yes, and the banquet hall moves, uh...
I, I don't know. I also, in the second part of that, a separate vote, I'd like to make, I'd like to recommend that in, that banquet halls are conditional by ordinance in industrial 1 districts. Sort of in keeping with what SBBA has written about, you know, like try to keep it as industrial as you can around here.
So I-1, you want to take it from the board to conditional use?
Leave it blank?
Yeah.
Sure, I'll accept a friendly amendment to leave it blank.
Yeah, I thought that's what we voted, I thought we voted the whole time.
It was IMU.
I'll second.
Good, IMU.
Well, we didn't actually...
Okay, I'll second, I second that.
All right, fine. Blank.
Okay, so you're...
I have a question on that.
Wait, wait, for clarity, for clarity, now you're, you're saying a banquet hall in I-1, instead of being by the board or the city council, you're saying leaving it blank?
I am, Mr. Chairman. I have come full circle.
I just have a question. Does, what would be the situation for a banquet hall to be in a shopping center with this?
Planning?
The shopping center is the 3, C-3 zone typically. A shopping center would not be IMU, and IMU is your older industrial buildings.
It would be permitted in a shopping center.
Um, I'd have to check. We just completed titles, 10...
Okay, so...
The C-3.
I'm sorry.
I, I just would like to steer them to shopping centers because there they have parking and usually good space for it, and I would rather have it somewhere where it does fit, and I want to make sure.
They're conditional in C-3, yes. Conditional to the board.
Conditional to the board?
Okay, so...
That's where they belong.
Councilwoman Clark, you move?
Move for I-1?
We got that. Clark moves. Craft?
Second.
Second. Rice Singer votes yes. Craft? Craft, yes. Branch?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
I still have to ask you, even though you made the motion. Henry?
Yes.
Henry, yes. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton, yes. Mosby?
Yes.
Mosby, yes. Mosby, yes. Seven passes. Broadcasting stations. Councilwoman Clark? Broadcasting stations in IMU.
Yes, in an IMU, excuse me, one second, and I1.
And I1.
Recommend that broadcasting stations require zoning board approval.
All right, you have a second on that? Second, no. Motion?
Mr. Chair, I have one question. Is that an FCC issue? Is broadcasting stations an FCC jurisdiction, domain?
Law department, I mean.
I don't know. I'd have to check on that. But in either way, I think, you know, conditional versus permitted probably wouldn't be an issue, but I can check if that's something the committee wants me to do.
I just would like to have that assurance.
We have found that these radio stations do well in the older industrial buildings, and there'd be no reason to restrict them.
Next one is car wash.
Okay, car wash in an IMU. I'd like it, it's not IMU, pardon me. I want it to go from permitted in industrial one and industrial two to zoning board approved. That's a motion. Do I have a second?
No second?
Okay, no second. Okay.
IMU? Carryout in IMU.
Is it my turn?
Carryout in IMU, Councilwoman Clark. You want to go from permitted to a conditional by zoning board in IOU. Carryout.
Yeah, I'd like to move that, that motion.
Wait, she moved. You want to second?
Since it appears we need to second, have discussion, I'm just looking for-
So people know what's coming. It's really a matter of advice. The zoning board generally approves everything. That's a conditional use. Huh?
It's industrial mixed use.
Start of residence, what's that? Commercial?
Well, yeah, wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry. So I've, I'm sorry. Across the table, and it's hard for, I mean, carryout in IMU, correct?
No, you said car wash in I1 and I2.
No, no, no. I was asking about carryouts. I was asking about the next one, the carryouts in IMU.
Oh, I'm sorry, carryout in IMU.
There wasn't a second to the car wash. It's okay. It's all right.
Carryout.
I would like it to go to the zoning board in IMU. So people know what's being proposed.
All right, you moving?
I'd like to move zoning board for carryouts in IMU.
Okay, do I have a second? You second. Moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman Henry. Right singer votes no. Craft?
No.
Craft is no. Branch?
No.
Branch is no. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is yes. Henry?
Yes.
Henry is yes. Middleton? Middleton's no. Mosby? Mosby's no. Two yes, four nos.
Mr. Chair, I just- Mr. Chair, I just have been circulating around the city, and the reputation that we're getting to that we actually infringe on business, we don't, that's jobs, that's revenue. Everything we're doing here is causing us to have this reputation that the city council is just a deterrent to do business in Baltimore City.
Mr. Chair?
I understand.
Traditionally, though, that kind of complaint comes after we've just passed an amendment that makes it harder. When you complain about us making business harder after we just didn't pass an amendment that would have made business harder, it's just kicking the opponents, I mean, the proponents when they're down.
Let's move on to the next amendment. Councilwoman Clark is entertainment, indoor.
Entertainment indoor, move to have IMU require a zoning amendment, a zoning conditional use approval. Do I have a second? I do not. Entertainment live, standalone establishment. This is important.
Industrial mixed use. You make a motion?
I'm moving that IMU be left blank for entertainment live standalone establishment.
Do I have a second?
That's not what's on my sheet. My sheet has entertainment live would be conditional by ordinance instead of conditional by board.
I know, but that was an error. Number seven. We actually recommended blank.
We are on entertainment indoor in IMU.
I didn't get a second.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to make it conditional by ordinance?
So now we're on entertainment live.
Yeah, standalone.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to make it conditional by ordinance?
I would surely do that.
I would second the conditional by ordinance for live entertainment.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, conditional by ordinance for live entertainment standalone.
From a conditional by board to conditional by the council, right?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Now, this is live, I'm sorry.
It's a standalone establishment.
I was going to ask planning-
We had this, that's like a theater.
That was entertainment indoor. This is entertainment standalone.
This is different.
The one on the table now is the live entertainment, the music, not the, the movie theater was the one that got no second.
Didn't get a second, so we're now on this.
Right. As opposed to, the reason it's called out that way on the table is, as opposed to entertainment that's secondary as part of a restaurant, tavern, art studio, or art gallery. So this would be-
A concert venue.
Yeah, anything that's standalone versus part of a restaurant. And we had recommended both of them be conditional in IMU.
I just said a theater.
No, 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 that was the one she didn't get the motion for.
No. Okay. So you're saying a theater cannot be a standalone establishment?
Entertainment, a movie theater falls under a different category. It falls under entertainment indoor.
I wasn't talking about a movie theater. Well, it doesn't matter.
Or a live theater. It's, this is, the entertainment standalone is the-
Can you give us an example?
Like a concert, you know.
Like Pier Six?
Like a Pier Six kind of thing, yeah. Or a club or something like that, where you have a band.
Right now, that's, that's, I guess, would be a C5 right now.
Yes.
But this is, this is industrial mixed use, so.
And we wanted it conditional because we heard from the arts community that there are, you know, certain situations where they'd like this ability to have that kind of entertainment, and they were comfortable with the conditional to the board. And what I understand the motion to be is to just make that conditional by ordinance.
Henry's got a question, and we're going to go for a vote because it was a motion and a second. So Councilman Henry, you want to ask your question?
Is there already anything in the code that we can hook on to that references size of the venue? Because if I'm understanding this right, entertainment live could be a, you know, 40-person black box theater for, you know, single-carat or something like that. Or it could be a 300-seat, you know, music venue. And that, it strikes me as how, it strikes me that they might, maybe they should be regulated differently.
You could make entertainment live large and small and put numbers on them if you wanted.
Could we defer this and maybe split it into, you know, something by size? And, you know, different sizes would get different levels of regulation.
Councilwoman Clark's motion, so if you want-
It's fine with me if you want to defer it. Look, this is a zoning code of generics. And that's going to lead to many problems, and this is one of them. But if someone wants to tackle it now, better now than after losing at the zoning board.
So you want to defer?
Yes, I will. I'll move to defer this category.
Do I have a second? Others with favor to say aye?
Aye. Can I ask Ms. Rulie for a question about if we're deferring it? Doesn't the fire department, aren't there regs about how much, how many people can be in a congregant, whether it be a live event or not? Isn't there?
Yes, there would probably be maximum capacity for everything.
But there's no, there's no one that says you have to be-
Well, yeah, let me just say, the motion was made, it was deferred.
Yes.
We need to have a discussion and go into work session now. Right now, we're on heavy retail. Councilwoman Clark, heavy retail.
Okay, this is a mixed-use, new kind of thing where people live in little tiny apartments or condos. And I would move to take heavy retail rental or service from being permitted to being blank.
My question. Laurie, give me some examples.
Your sort of auto parts, your truck rentals, your, let me go back to the definition. It could be truck-related uses. Remember, this is a transitional zone.
No, I'm just trying to find out.
Yeah.
You have separate things for like marine supplies and, you know, that sort of thing. But would boats fall under that?
This is more, include things like home improvement centers, industrial supplies, lumberyards, heavy equipment sales and rental, playground equipment sales and rental. Those are examples.
So if somebody wanted to-
Sort of like a, that place out on Route 40, that, you know, the hardware place, like that has-
Right, like a Lowe's, like a Lowe's or something like that.
Yeah, and they, but they have the equipment for rent there, the bigger items.
Mr. Chair, I thought that might even be electronics equipment, TVs, and those kind of, that would prohibit. You can't buy something electronic in Baltimore City anymore.
Electronics wouldn't be the heavy retail.
I need some clarity. Councilwoman Clark, you said it has one here, you want to take it from P to CO. Now you want to make it blank, or you want to leave it CO? Which is conditional by ordinance?
Ricky, just let me finish my sentence and then talk if you want. I'm just trying to just get my sentence out.
Hasn't been a second yet.
I did make a motion for blank that- This is, look.
Totally prohibited.
We have-
I was just getting ready to vote for it with conditional, but-
What, conditional with ordinance? I'll take a vote. If I can get a vote, I'll go there. All right, I'll change it to conditional by ordinance. I-
I'd rather have that than have it, than have it, rather have that than move.
Okay, so it's changed.
I've changed it. Conditional by ordinance. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, this could go into I1.
Councilwoman-
Okay.
A motion was made by you, seconded by Councilman Henry. Right singer votes, you approve the petition. Councilway singer votes yes. Craft?
Yes.
Branch?
Yes.
Branch, Clark?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton? Yes. Mosby?
No.
Mosby's no. We have six yes with one nos. Councilwoman Clark, we have one more at the bottom. It's got a line through it, but it says mental, metal, mental and dental. Medical? Is that medical? It says mental on here. It says mental on here.
Councilman, Mr. Chairman, whatever it says, consider it withdrawn.
So it's really medical. Medical, dental clinic.
But I'm getting mental trying to read it.
Did you say you withdraw? Did I say? Okay, do we have a motion? She moved to withdraw. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those with favor to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, and it's withdrawn. Page 18, T612. Anyone want to?
Most of that you discussed. Most of that you just discussed.
Discussed that?
Yeah, a lot of it's a reference.
No motion. We're now on T613. Councilwoman Clark?
Yeah, 613 doesn't really say anything. 614 does.
Let's stick with 613. T613, what are you doing with T613, Councilwoman?
I'll withdraw it. I mean, it's just the beginning.
Okay, well, let's make a motion to withdraw, then we'll go to the next one.
Move to withdraw. 613.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those with favor to withdraw, say aye. Those opposed say nay, the ayes have it. T613 is withdrawing.
Mr. Chairman, 614 has two items. I would like to move to withdraw from consideration. They are daycare center, adult or child, and they are truck repair.
So those two you're going to withdraw?
I'm withdrawing from this list.
Those two?
Yes.
Okay. You make a motion, right?
Yeah, move.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those with favor to say aye. Those opposed say nay, the ayes have it, and those two are withdrawn. Now we are on-
Motor vehicle operation facility. That's, it's all part of 614.
Remember, that's Table 11, 301, motor vehicle operation facility.
Does that mean retail?
These are, I'm recommending, I'd like to make a motion for I1. Excuse me.
For the committee, hold on. That's page 18, right?
Page 18 of our table sheets, and it's 614, and we're working our way down a short list of-
Is that MVA kind of uses?
No, the motor vehicle operation is for privately-owned facilities for the dispatch, storage, maintenance of emergency medical vehicles, taxi cab, and other livery vehicles. It excludes the dealership. It's not for the sale of cars. It's like the place where, you know, you'd run the ambulances or things like that, other commercial types of vehicles.
And school buses, that kind of vehicle?
B buses, yeah.
Any vehicle storage or parking?
Yes.
Okay, so you moved. Do you have a second?
Well, I've moved that it be in I1, it become conditional by ordinance, and that in I2, it become conditional by zoning because these are, these begin to be the kind of issues that are not manufacturing.
Are you moving both of them?
I'm moving them both.
Okay, do I have a second? Do I have a second? No second. Fairness for motion. Next one is Truck Stop and Truck Terminal. Where's that at?
Yeah.
That's on page 19.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're, all right, no, I just got to write what happened. So now I'm in Truck Stop and Truck Terminal. Remember, these mixed-use operations, people living here, et cetera. Truck Stop and Truck Terminal and, oh, I'm sorry, that wasn't. This is I1 and I2. I'm moving them to conditional by ordinance, conditional by the board, not permitted.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my error. It's not IMU.
So you moving it? Do I have a second?
Okay.
No second?
These are things that I think the industrial sector- things that I think the industrial sector would just assume. Now, you, now you're on wholesale goods establishment? Okay, wholesale goods establishment. IMU on I one and I two, they're all permitted. I want them all to be conditional by the zoning board. Move by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Henry. Right singer votes no. Kraft?
No.
Kraft, no. Branch? Branch, no. Clark? Yes. Clark, yes. Henry? Henry, yes. Middleton?
No.
Middleton, no. Mosby? Mosby, no. Two yes. Five nos. It fails. What's the next one? Parking lot? I've been running, I've been helping you. Principal use. All these years that you haven't. Councilwoman Clark? Um, Mr. Chairman, in a page or two, there'll be T89 that addresses this. On page twenty, um, T89. So if I could defer this till then, I'd move to defer parking for principal use until we reach, um, T89 where it's more fully just articulated.
Didn't, um, didn't we make parking lots conditional?
Yeah, but not for industrial.
No, but I'm saying we made them conditional by ordinance in in a residential zone, right?
In business.
No? C5 downtown.
And in residential, but-
And res- residential.
This is IMU. But we're now into industrial.
They're conditional by ordinance in ar, in the R zones and in the C5. Right?
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to, there were two uses that, pardon me, there are three, that I overlooked and that are, um, some of which are in Joe McNeely's, um, six, or six twelve above, but if I may, uh, remember, we, we went past six twelve. Motor vehicle service and repair major. Councilwoman Clark, I don't, I have no idea what you're talking about. Okay, I don't, I apologize. Let me stop. I tell you what, at the next voting session, bring that up so we can go back. Okay, I will. Okay? Only thing I want to, at this time, there's, we finished that. I think there's regards to legislation from either Councilwoman Middleton, and I'm ready to leapfrog into. Is that, is that the, the, uh, the, uh, club, do we vote on that? Oh. Do we, do we vote on that yet? We didn't vote on that yet.
No. What's that?
What page is that on in there? I don't know. I believe that's on page four. Page four? Page eight oh three. Number, T879, I know is deferred.
Eight seventy-nine.
Table- Same one.
Eight three oh one?
Says for country club.
Then T6 was also deferred for Councilwoman Middleton at a previous session. Okay, I see. So T879 was deferred, right? And what is the, what is, is there another one, Councilwoman Middleton? Is that it? You and Clark?
I think that's the only one.
Where is it?
The country club is permitted by right.
Baltimore Country Club, T879.
Page four of this?
Permitted as a conditional use in all of the R1 zones.
You're doing both? So what is it? And then T, um- T879 was one that was deferred. What is the other one? The other one that I have as deferred for Councilwoman Middleton was T6, which is about educational facilities. Okay. So Council, you want to just do T879 right now, and then go back for the, what do you want to do? Now, where are we? T8789? T879 is the country club.
So on page four.
Page four. We started late.
I, I'm not sure T879 does anything, but it was deferred, because it, it is conditional now, and it's just making it conditional by board, which is the same thing.
Councilwoman Cl- uh, Middleton, you want to, you want to wait till the next voting session on this, or what?
Yes, let's wait till the next one.
Okay.
We'll start off with that one.
That's okay. This, um, this voting session is in recess until, what? Till March the eleventh. Thank you.